And tonight, we are having a special session where we will be reading ordinances for third reading, also some ordinances for second reading, and then we'll be moving on into our committee meetings tonight. We have four committees with business. So our first item of business is to establish the quorum, and all members of council are present. We'll now move into ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1022 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit to Good Works Inc., owner, at 100 Central Avenue, to construct an accessible parking space, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. And we have discussed this in committee and at first and second reads, and this is granting a right-of-way use permit to Good Works. And there was a question raised, I believe, last week in council regarding whether or not this location is a duplex, and our clerk confirmed with Code Enforcement Office that it is not a duplex.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1022. Any questions or comments from council members, from other elected officials, from anyone in the audience? If not, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1922 is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as NOPEC, 2022 energized community grant funds, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01922.
Second.
Thank you, Member Eisner. As discussed at committee and at first reading, this is a grant the city has received and has plans to upgrade lighting in the Athens Community Center, particularly the gym, but also it's estimated that other spaces in the community center, as well as possibly other locations in the city outside the community center, upgrade the lighting to LED lighting. So this is the type of initiative that the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council hopes that these community grants can be used for, and I hope that people support this ordinance. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any additional comments or questions from council members, administration, or elected officials, or our audience? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2022 is an ordinance amending the 2022 appropriation ordinance 15021 and authorizing the auditor to make inter-fund transfers, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to amend 02022, excuse me, 22.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
Thank you. There are a number of items on this appropriation ordinance, one of them being $35,000 to the General Fund Police for an APD server replacement. Our chief of police has done his due diligence to look into the matter of the server more carefully, and in particular with BSSI, the organization that we are planning to move our IT operations to. And on the advice and consultation with BSSI, they found some pieces which would increase this cost by $10,000. So I am making a motion to amend from $35,000 to $45,000 for this line item.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for amending the ordinance to increase it by $10,000. Is there any further discussion or questions from our council members? Yes, Councilmember Eisner?
Any idea what these pieces are?
Director Stone, do you want to speak to that?
There are two elements of it. One is a virtualization of a couple of the servers. So rather than be physical boxes, it'll be virtual servers internal to the thing. And then the second is business class backup versus kind of just your standard-grade backup.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? Okay, so we're now voting on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 2122 is an ordinance amending the 2022 staffing levels and pay grades authorized by ordinance 14121 and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed, there were a few adjustments to the staffing ordinance, mostly switching of titles and a few percentages of where salaries come from for the arts, parts, and recreation department, engineering and public works, and the code office. These are administrative positions. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02122.
Second. And we have a motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Swank?
As I was driving back into town this evening on East State Street, I noticed quite a few signs out that I had not yet seen. And these signs were advertising for help, we're hiring. And the entry-level wage was starting at $12 and going all the way up to 15. How this relates to the ordinance before us today, I'm beginning to wonder if the $11 that we are going to offer lifeguards at our pool might potentially put us into a pickle, hopefully not as severe, but severe like we had last year. In other words, I'm a 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old kid, and I'm looking for a summer job. Am I going to come work for the City of Athens for $11 when I can go to McDonald's and work for 15? I hope I'm wrong, but this is, I guess, a procedural question. If we find over the next month or two, as we're trying to recruit lifeguards, that we can't get them, how would we possibly -- what would the process be to look at the wages that we're offering?
I think to answer your -- to begin to answer your question, thank you, Councilmember Swank, it would be an administrative decision as they create the budget for the different departments. And if they -- we would have a recommendation from them that they think that this is a necessary thing to do, then that would come forward through the Finance Committee, which would then be possibly then a subsequent amendment to the staffing ordinance to change the hourly rate. Sound reasonable, Mayor Patterson?
It does sound reasonable.
Okay.
We have explored those rates, and I know that there was a recent change where we increased a lot of them. Cashier, head lifeguard, lifeguards was recently changed. And I think, you know, quite honestly, yeah, right now, we're looking at $11, as you just indicated, you know, it's $2.50 above where it was. And I look at the type of individuals who will typically fill these. Like, we just recently, two years ago, three years ago, we lowered it to age 16, which we had not done before either. I think that, given the nature of that particular position, that we will see a number of people who want to work during the summer because they're just working those three months as lifeguards, you know. And, you know, we're talking about a very specific skill set for a lifeguard at the pool. And so, you know, I don't think that we're going to struggle trying to fill the positions. And this year, we're certainly going to over-hire into those positions because therein lies part of the problem that we experienced last summer. So...
Again, I hope I'm wrong, but boy, I tell you what, I'm a 16-year-old kid, and I get 15 here and 11 here. I may be going to the 15 job. And, you know, you can hire somebody McDonald's right off the street. You can't hire a lifeguard right off the street.
Yeah.
Because the training is starting the Monday after spring break for the first class, for those who want to get their lifeguard certification. Anyway, again, I hope I'm wrong, but it just kind of -- so I drove into town and saw these signs. I'm thinking back to $1.50 when you and I probably had our first summer job. That seems like an awful lot of money, but there is a disparity there. So, again, I hope I'm wrong, but some I think we need to pay particular attention to get those spots filled.
$1.25 an hour. That was my first job.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the comments. Any other questions or comments from council members, administration, elected officials, Mayor Patterson?
I do just have a quick comment, and I appreciate that council is taking this up because I think another important new position that is in here is the DEI Coordinator for the City of Athens, which is vitally important as we continue our journey on diversity and equity here in the City of Athens.
Okay, thank you. And any other comments or questions, any comments or questions from our audience? If not, we have a motion and second for approval of 2122. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2222 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the Uptown area for special events during the 2022 calendar year and to change requested dates or cancel events as necessary. And this is introduced by Councilmember Eisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance and the two that will follow it are all related, having to do with our various street activities during the year. Let me read Section 1 of 2222. The City Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to close streets in the Uptown area for special events during the 2022 calendar year, to change requested dates or cancel events, and implement the following: A) close designated streets to vehicular traffic in the City of Athens no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than midnight, and maintain cross-traffic wherever practicable for the following events. Then there's a list of some 13 different events throughout the year. It's all in your disk drive. You can read it for yourself. And then, B, paragraph B, ban parking on designated streets beginning no earlier than 3:00 a.m. and no later than 1:00 a.m. the following day to accommodate these events. So I move that we adopt 2222.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have a motion and second. Thank you, council members. Do we have any discussion, questions, or comments from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2322 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in a Designated Area, introduced by Councilmember Eisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the second one of the related ordinances. Council President has already read the title, which is pretty much all of Section 1. No use repeating it. The following events include the Athens Brick Criterium, Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Ohio Brew Week, First Call Ohio Brew Week, Last Call, Athens Arts and Music Festival, and Halloween Weekend. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 2322.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2422 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area, and this is introduced by Councilmember Eisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the last of the ordinances to read. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 2422.
Second.
Read the pertinent section. The enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting is hereby suspended from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. to allow vending in the designated street closure areas at such time and areas determined appropriate by the administration for the following events. And again, there is a list of events. Section 2, prospective vendors shall register their name, address, and items to be vended with the Code Enforcement Office by 2:00 p.m. on or before two business days prior to the listed events, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval of 2422. Comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And the last of our third readings is ordinance 2522, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Unlawful Discriminatory Practices, and is introduced by Councilmember Carey.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2522.
Second.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that has been discussed in committee, that we're on to its third reading, and an attempt to expand our understanding of the definition of racial discrimination, to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair textures and protective hair cultural hairstyles. This is part of our overall efforts to be more inclusive and less discriminatory in our practices, and I think it fits in with our Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis, and there's been a lot of support for this. Hope there will be more support tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2522. Any comments or questions from our council members, or administration, elected officials, or our audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading, the first one being 2622. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code, Section 9.11.10, Face Coverings in Public Spaces, and declaring this ordinance an emergency measure to extend through March 31, 2022, and introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance. Prior to last Friday afternoon, I had thought I would be making a motion to suspend the rules with this ordinance. Instead, I am bringing to my fellow members of council a motion to amend. Currently, this much amended section of code reads, "Effective through March 31, 2022, all individuals within the city shall wear a face covering over the individual's nose, mouth, and chin in accordance with the following." The amendment that I'm introducing strikes March 31, 2022, and inserts December 31, 2022, "At any time when guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC recommends masking indoors for Athens County, all individuals within the city shall wear a face covering over the individual's nose, mouth, and chin in accordance with the following." And then it lists the public locations where we currently, through today, require masking. A few things that I want to acknowledge with the introduction of this amendment. One is the high level of difficulty associated with enforcing this and providing consistency throughout the city as far as communication, as to when masking is required. I understand that that will be difficult, and that masking, enforcing of masking, is already quite difficult in some locations. I also want to acknowledge that as someone trained in public health and as someone who, throughout this pandemic, has relied on the guidance of the Centers for Disease Control, I wish to be consistent and continue to rely on their guidance. And I think that it is important to take into account the change in the impact of disease on the community, and the new measures put forward by the CDC last week do that by looking at hospitalization rates in addition to case rates. Another thing is, a week ago, on February 21, the case rate in Athens was 371.97 per 100,000, one week ago. Today, from the same source, from the CDC, the case rate is 151.55. A week ago, our positivity rate was 9.77, and today is 4.7. So our case rate and our positivity rate have both declined significantly and have been declining. So I understand that this also poses a challenge. We're about to see our community go on spring break, and I believe I and many others in our community will be traveling to different places and then returning to Athens. And the biggest concern that I have personally, though I'm the one introducing the change, is for vulnerable members of our community. And in some ways, I believe that the CDC guidance has sort of left them behind, whether it's families with young children who are not able to be vaccinated, individuals with suppressed immune systems because of an illness or a medical treatment for another disease. They continue to be vulnerable. And it is -- so I introduce this amendment because it follows the guidance of the CDC and of our local health expert from the Health Department, Dr. Gaskell. I spoke with him at length over the weekend, and as I think many members of council heard recently, our -- the one remaining school district in Athens County that had been requiring masking is going to mask optional. Now, they have said that if cases increase again, they will return to requiring them. And I believe we will also be hearing of changing policies from the university. So that being said, because I do see the risk of a population leaving and returning, and I do understand the risk to vulnerable members of our community, I would certainly understand if my fellow members of council do not agree with this amendment and this change. But I bring it forward as -- because I think that for me, to follow the guidance of the CDC is the most consistent a practice for myself. And so that's why I introduced this amendment, and...
And so you're making a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
To amend?
To amend.
With the language that you have stated.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, oh, it also changes the final section. Just, it puts into effect through the remainder of this year, this calendar year, that if guidance from the CDC says that the residents of Athens County should mask when indoors, then masks are required within the city when indoors.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion. Do we have a second from Councilmember Crowell? Okay. And did you have a comment, Councilmember Eisner?
Yes. Could you please tell me your amendment again? I didn't catch all of it.
Sure.
Do you have that in writing, by chance?
I do, but only one copy, sorry.
Could we get a point of order? Could we get this in writing, please? This is a rather radical change, very short notice. Some of us are more visual learners than others. And could we possibly get copies of this to review so we can have an informed discussion?
I will read it again, and then I don't know what the answer...
And we'll see. I'm not sure, Scott, if we have capability of putting it onto the screen. Do you have it in that Word document that you could send it to Scott right now, Scott and Ryan? Is that a possibility, Scott? Okay. If you could send it to that.
I will read. Okay, I don't actually have it because it's on my home computer.
Really old technology there.
Well, actually, it might...
Did you send it by email to yourself?
Nope, but I can do it right here.
We've got a copy.
We've got a copy. Just give me a minute to read it one more time out loud so that you all can discuss, and then we'll have somebody run and get a copy of it. Because it changes and says, it inserts language, "Effective through December 31, 2022, at any time when guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommends masking indoors for Athens County." That's it. Then it changes, "All individuals will comply and wear a face mask." And...
And then is that same language in the last section? It's identical?
In the last section...
Yeah, all it does down in Section 2 is change the date to December 31.
All right.
And Scott or Ryan, could I ask a favor of one of you to go make copies of this? Thank you. Do we have additional comments? Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Isley, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. I agree with Member Grace. I think that from the beginning at least, the CDC -- I am not a scientist. I'm not a public health expert, and the CDC is what I have relied on to understand what I believe are the proper measures for this. So to not continue at this point to follow the guidance, I think would be hypocritical. And as backing up with our local numbers, the science is what we've been trying to follow, and I believe the science is in support of this. My two questions, Member Grace, for the suggested amendments. One is, we know that if we need to bring this back, that we will probably do so under an emergency measure. And I don't know if we wanted to incorporate that language into the ordinance. Or, I mean, we can always deal with it on an emergency basis level, you know, but I didn't know if that should be in there. My other question was, I think, and we'll see when we get the copy, I think it was either CDC guidance or recommendation. And is that for Athens County was the language? Is that the most sort of exact we can get to the actual data that the CDC will base that on? I'm just wanting to be -- I want to not leave us up to interpretation. Oh, but then in another section, the CDC recommended this or said this, which does yours apply? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Okay, so on the first one, I don't think that we need to insert language regarding emergency because this is like an auto -- an auto trigger. It's, "At any time when guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommends masking indoors for Athens County." So if the guidance from the CDC says, here are our standards, when you punch in Athens County, Ohio, it does not come up as high the current -- and but so I don't think we need that, but I could be wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe this is a law director question. I don't know. Is there precedence for this kind of ordinance, that suddenly something is in effect? If I haven't checked the CDC website the day before, and I've not been reading my newspapers, and two days later, I'm out, and I didn't know, I mean, how does this happen?
I'm not aware of any time that anything like this has happened. I don't know, maybe our clerk of council is aware of something.
So I just thought, as a council, bringing this up is sort of an official, right, okay, we passed this, now it's official, instead of this auto, I mean, you know, at what time does the CDC make this designation? I don't know. It just seems a little bit shaky there to me.
I don't disagree.
Okay, so other comments or questions? Let's give -- council members, to be honest, yes?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I agree with what you're talking about. It was my position that I've stated in past council meeting that having a... Some kind of trigger like this so we can follow the CDC guidelines rather than just a date. But it was my impression from talking to the law director, perhaps you want to address this again, that that would be difficult to do. So, I want to really get a sense from you, Law Director Eliason, about what your thoughts are about this and any recommendations, as is appropriate, under these circumstances.
Well, this is fairly simple. But I guess my question is, how do we notify the citizens that this trigger has happened?
The board out front on Court Street, it's not a fail-safe way of doing it. But that would be one way, or the public service announcements. So, and I see the administration shaking their head that this isn't going to get the information out. Mayor Patterson, yes?
Let me at least share some concern. And I think everyone's kind of tap dancing around that concern with this piece of legislation, this amendment. You know, on Friday, the CDC came out with their new guidelines for their recommendation on face coverings due to COVID-19. And, Councilmember Grace, thank you for bringing that up, that they brought in more metrics. You know, cases 200 per 100,000. It used to be 50. Also bringing in the hospitalization. So, it's an interesting metric and an interesting way to do this. And they've categorized it into three groupings. High, medium, and low. Medium and low do not require... CDC's guidance is, you don't need to wear face coverings while indoors. For high, you do. On Friday, we were listed as medium. Sunday, we were listed as high. Today, we're listed as medium. So, again, my question to council is, from an administrative standpoint, how do we turn on and off this light switch to one day, you've got to wear a covering when you go into a business open to the public, the next day, or several days, you don't? I think, at the end of the day, and I too have spoken to Doc Gaskell, just spoke to him this afternoon, about this. And he shared a level of concern as well with the way the CDC has rolled this out in that it's likely going to cause a whole lot of confusion in a whole lot of places. So, as I'm, you know, looking at, you know, my three to four officers on a good day that are out patrolling and trying to respond, and they do, to calls that come in about, you know, people not wearing face coverings in Operation X, Y, or Z, is, you know, I'm going to have to put out an alert to them every day saying, "Today's a yellow day." So, you don't have to go and enforce anything. And then the next day, we go into high, and we're red. "Oh, you got to go and start policing these," you know, the calls that are coming in. That's my opinion, you know, in terms of the confusion that's going to be created. I think that confusion has already been created because a whole lot of people, you know, are very much aware of the CDC's new guidelines. And it happened to come out on a day in which Athens County was yellow, medium. And a lot of people are going, "Yay, no more masks." You know, I get it. There's a whole lot of face covering fatigue that's going on out there. On the other front, and again, at the meeting that I was in, that Dr. Gaskell was there, the director for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, was there already... Not Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce was there. And certainly, I know that council has received a letter from the chamber, certainly the chamber expressing the people that are on the front lines trying to uphold a lot of the cities. This particular piece of legislation is those business, are the employees, you know? To Councilmember Swank's point of income, you know, here's an individual making $9.80, having to tell people, "You got to put this on your face," which is great. But it's also, you know, in some cases, putting them in a really hostile situation. You know, I'll also share with council, and I mentioned this when this came up for first reading. And that is that the city of Athens, we are the last standing statutory city in the state of Ohio that has a law on the books that requires face coverings when entering into places, public places, open to the public. And I applaud council for being so proactive and willing. You were on recess, if you remember. And we were able, in 13 days, to get that piece of legislation through and have continued to keep it in place in a way to protect our citizens. And so, again, I applaud you. But we're seeing so many indicators that are showing a continual downward trend in terms of the infection rate here in the city of Athens. I also want to give a big thank you to Dr. Karen Koschagano at Ohio University, who has been doing the assays for our viral load sampling that we are doing at the four viral load sampling sites in the city. One being at the head of the wastewater treatment plant, one on Richland Avenue, collecting data from all of the south side of the city, the Depot Lift Station, which is collecting data on the west side of the city and some of the north side. And then the library site, to where we're collecting data that is, you know, for a lot of the east side of the city of Athens. And I've shared those with council. Or at least, I know I've shared it with President Isley to look at that data. And if you look at that data, that data, it too, which is giving us a four to seven-day window look ahead of what we can be expecting, it too has shown basically a steady decrease in the viral load that's being picked up in the city's wastewater. The last thing I just want to mention is that I went back and looked at that data from Dr. Koschagano. And I know that there's concern over upcoming spring break and people returning to the city of Athens, whether it's K through 12 individuals or Ohio University student body. I will say this. I went back and carefully looked at move-in, 2021 move-in. I looked at the Thanksgiving, post Thanksgiving. I looked at the Halloween viral load sampling. I looked at move back in, if you will, after the holiday break. And never in that data was there a, you know, two consecutive tenfold increases in viral load. So, it really kind of, you know, counters that argument that, you know, that we're going to have individuals coming back from being who knows where, and they're going to be spreading virus all throughout the city. We just never saw spikes after any of those. So, again, just sharing that data. And council, if you want to look at this data, you can look at it all day long. I've been looking at it for years now. Well, almost a year.
And so, let's continue the discussion. Mayor Patterson, thank you for those comments. What we have right now is a motion and second for an amendment. So, if there are any other comments about that particular amendment, that's what I'd like to hear comments on now. And then we can return to the other broader ordinance when we return to that. So, Councilmember Swank, do you have a comment on the amendment?
Yes, and I think the mayor brought up a very, very good point and used a word that kind of hits the nail on the head. That was confusion. I talked with many officials in the Athens City Schools today. And many students came to school without masks. And when confronted, not confronted, when reminded by their teachers that, "Hey, you need a mask," the overwhelming majority of those students who did not wear a mask simply said, "My mom or dad said I didn't have to wear one anymore." Confusion is a big deal. But I'll take it a step further. Variability. Mayor did not use that word, but he outlined it very clearly. Up one day, down the next. We are still going down. But we're going down at such a pace that there's those ups and downs. Personally, I would like to see this thing play out a little longer before we go into... So, we're, you know, we're steady. We're in the middle. We're not on the edges of going up or the edges of going down because there is no way to communicate this effectively on a timely manner without creating total confusion. So, I would be very much against this amendment as currently stated.
Okay. We're going to take a few more comments here amongst council members if you have anything to add about the amendment. Are there any other comments or questions? And do we have... And administration elected officials, no other comments? Do we have any comments? And this is just specifically about the amendment? Okay. So, it's not about the amendment at this point?
Well, in a broader sense, so I'll...
Okay. It's... Well, it's up to you. If you'd like to come up now, you have... You need to give us your name, your address, if you represent a group. And you'll have three minutes to make a comment.
Sure. I'll be super brief. My name's Jameric, One Pine Wood Way, Athens, Ohio. And first of all, thanks very much for public service. I know it's difficult all the time. But I wanted to talk a little bit about governance and sort of where we are with this. One of the issues that I've seen that I think is going to play out even further if we don't do something about this is the noncompliance with masks. I believe it was Councilmember Grace's comment that it's becoming increasingly difficult to enforce this. And I think, I fear what we're going to end up with is increasing noncompliance. And this is going to put us in a position where people are, you know, we're going to be in a position where people are going to watch the State of the Union where most of the members aren't going to be masked, yet they're going to be forced to be masked here. And I think this is sort of going to reinforce that issue with noncompliance and masking. And I fear what's going to happen is we're going to generate the inability to enforce masking should another variant that's more deadly come along. So, if we keep forcing people to wear masks when the rest of the world isn't, I think it's going to become very, very problematic for us when we really, really need people to mask up and getting them to comply with it. And that's all I have. Again, thanks so much for your service.
Thank you. All right. So, we have... Oh, and there's somebody else. Yes, come on up. And same routine to give us your name and address. And if you represent a group, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Tyce Pat. I'm a student at Ohio University. I live on 20 Kurt Street. And so, I would encourage you guys not to pass this amendment and furthermore, not to renew this because, you know, let it expire after today. As we discussed, this is going to create a lot of confusion. There's already been a lot of confusion. And I hope everybody here can agree that medical choice is a basic human right, and we need to respect everybody in Athens' ability to make their own medical decisions. The reason we might be seeing kids come into school without a mask on, and their parents might be telling them to do that, is because the CDC is telling us to do that. We can all go to the CDC's website right now. And Athens County is medium, as the mayor mentioned. And masks are not recommended for everybody. They recommend you to talk to your healthcare provider. And since this mask mandate was renewed August 17th, or it was around then, 2021, cases only have risen. If the mask mandate was making that much of a difference, we wouldn't have seen the biggest spike Athens has seen in spread. And we did. So, furthermore, I'd agree with the previous speaker that, yeah, you're going to see a lot less people want to keep doing this when nobody else has to do it. Our elected officials in Congress don't have to do it. We need to trust people to make their own decisions. I think we're at that point. And I would encourage you guys to let this mandate expire tonight.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for the comments. Anybody else? All right. So, the motion now is for the amendment. And that is for the language that would say, add the words "effective through December 31st, 2022, at any time when guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommends masking indoors for Athens County." That all individuals would do that. So, all those in favor of passing this amendment, and if you would please raise your hands so that we can take a tally. Anybody? Okay. So, we have one in favor, opposed to the amendment. We have six. Okay. Thank you. So, the motion to amend fails. So, we still have this that has been read for the second time.
Correct.
Okay. And are you wanting to move forward in any way with this tonight, knowing that it expires tonight? Are you wanting to make a motion to suspend and approve or not?
I do not plan to. Other members could make a motion. Or does it have to be me because I was introduced by me?
She was the one who introduced it, so she...
I think someone else could make a motion to approve.
Somebody else could make a motion to approve this if they wanted to. Otherwise, it stays as an ordinance for second reading. But if it didn't get acted on tonight, then it would expire effectively. Tonight.
Point of order?
Yes.
We have a quorum next Monday night.
You will have a quorum. You will not be able to sus... Well, we won't need to suspend because it would be third reading.
That's right.
However, by next Monday night, it will have gone out of effect. And my only comment would be is that if we're talking about a confusion factor, it will have expired for six days when you return.
Yeah, you can't extend something that's expired and extend it in the ordinance.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. Law director.
I'm not sure what the question has asked.
I'm not sure either.
Can you extend something that has expired?
No.
Okay. Which would make this nullified?
I believe it would.
Or moot point?
Well...
And that's an interesting thing because you'd be bringing forward... You'd be bringing forward, though, it would come move forward as for a third reading.
It would, however, it had already expired.
So, can you vote on it?
At the end of the month.
Right.
Can't extend something that's not in effect.
Correct.
Right.
Extend is in the title. It is...
Yes.
It is not in the sections of the ordinance. The ordinance is... Says that Athens City Code shall read. I don't know. But I... I am 100% in agreement with the issue of confusion. And the problem is, we already have that. And that's why the only thing that I could think to do was to try to be consistent with what the CDC guidance is. And that changes because what we're dealing with is a disease that is changing. I think that... That the reality, and I understand and have, you know, no concerns whatsoever about a failure to pass the amendment because I understand it's very challenging. I wanted to bring it forward as... To point out the difficulty with the situation that we are in and with following, like legislating CDC guidance on something that is very rapidly changing. And in my mind, the reality is that if we have something in place, the locations that want to protect their customers or their employees will ask for it to be enforced within their location. And those that don't, won't. And that's... In my mind, that is the reality of the situation. But having consistently said that I... I make my recommendations in terms of public health guidance based on the guidance of the CDC, I cannot recommend that we do something other than that. And I think that consistency, even if it's imperfect, consistency is better than differing recommendations.
So, you...
So, I am not making a motion to suspend. But I will leave that to other members of council.
Either that or another option is, would we want to table?
That makes it cleaner, I believe, just a motion to table. You can't... We can't... If it's up for third reading next week, it's already expired.
Right.
And, you know, even the title says, "An ordinance amending 9/11/10," but that's already expired. And you can't really amend something that's already... expired and you can't really amend something that's already gone. So a motion to table is probably, if that's what.
And then it just gets tabled indefinitely until somebody brings back another solution or a recommendation to reinstitute the mask ordinance.
Right.
Thank you, Clerk of Council. That suggestion, okay. So wait, Councilmember Spielness and then Councilmember Snitz.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a, that was still a little bit confusing to me. So if you table it, then what happens exactly? I mean.
Well, then it effectively postpones its decision. It just is out there. It doesn't have to be, and it wouldn't be, you wouldn't bring it back unless there was a reason to, but there wouldn't be any reason to. So she's just saying, Robert's Rules of Order wise, this would be cleaner to table it. Because if you leave it and you have it returned next week, it is a third reading. Well, now what do we do with it because it's already expired? So yes, Councilmember Swank.
So we have two options on that. We can postpone to a specific point in time.
Right.
Or we can postpone indefinitely.
Right.
If we postpone it indefinitely and the session ends on December 31st, 2023, it just disappears.
It dies.
Right, correct.
So that said, I'm going to take a guess that most everybody's in this room is in agreement with the CDC in terms of their recommendations of when one should wear a mask. This may be getting the cart before the horse. But without passing an ordinance, i.e. legislation, would it be wise either tonight or sometime in the near future for this body to pass a resolution encouraging residents, both permanent and visitors, to Athens County to follow CDC recommendations on masking?
And that's a possibility for later on, but that, yes. And so thank you. And that's germane to our discussion right now. But that's a possible solution. So right now facing us is.
I will move to, I will move to postpone action on this ordinance indefinitely.
Okay, so you're putting.
Making a motion to table.
You're making a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and second to table this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance is tabled. Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on now. Thanks, everyone, for moving us through that conundrum. 2822 is an ordinance authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And if we have no comments or questions, we will move on and consider it read for the second time. Ordinance 2922 is an ordinance authorizing design services and construction of tennis and pickleball courts. This is project number 350, introduced by Councilmember McCary. And if no comments, questions, updates? Yes, Councilmember Swank.
Question for Mr. Stone. By chance, do we have, it's been 10 days, nine days since the meeting, can we have an update as to two things? Number one, when we might see preliminary or final plans? And secondly, do we have an update on any estimated costs for the project at this point in time from, from the, the design firm?
I don't, but I hope to have that well in advance of the next or third reading. So I should.
Which is next week? Okay, great.
Yeah, I should have the opportunity to, well, I guess, I suppose it is next week either because it's a special session. I sincerely hope to have that in advance of the third reading. I will do my best to secure both of those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, if no other questions, we'll move on now to ordinance 3020. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.02, Fire Prevention, Section 9.02.01, code adopted, introduced by Councilmember Carey. And if no questions, comments, or updates, we will move on to ordinance 3122. This is an ordinance granting a special use permit to Marietta Memorial Healthcare, Inc., 2006 Columbus Road, to allow parking and a monument sign in the city's right of way, introduced by Councilmember Grace. And if no comments or updates, we will move on to ordinance 3222. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the agreement with, with Sunday Creek Horizons, a consulting firm, to continue work on a remote work system for the city of Athens, introduced by Councilmember Grace. Okay, and if no comments or questions, and I know we'll be having a presentation in a few minutes at our committee meeting, then we'll, then we'll move on with that. Ordinance 3322 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 33, Shade Tree Commission, Section 33.01.01, Commission Membership, introduced by Councilmember Grace. And if no comments, questions, or updates? Yes, Councilmember Swank.
I know that as part of this, we're trying to eliminate his, her, he, she, and all of that. And in Part B, it says a member of city council and the mayor or designee who will serve as non-voting official members. I mentioned this to Mr. Reisner a couple of weeks ago. That is very vague. So what I did is I ran this by a couple of high school English teachers today, and they said, Alan, you need a modifier in there. And the suggestion was a member of city council and the mayor or the mayor's designee. Because as it reads now, is it council's designee or is it the mayor's designee? And the suggestion by the two English teachers was without a modifier, there's confusion. So instead of replace, instead of saying his, her, simply say or mayor's designee. So we know where the designation is coming from and it's the mayor of, just to clean it up and clarify it a little bit. And it does do what Mr. McCary wanted, and that is to, and I agree, eliminating the his, her, and those sort of titles. And here as we go.
So you're suggesting modifying the text, and I'm going to refer to Law Director Elias and then say, is that a typo or?
It's more editorial than anything, just.
I would agree to that, yes.
So we don't need to amend?
I think it was everyone's understanding that it was the mayor's designee, so.
Okay, thanks for the comment.
I don't think an amendment's necessary, considered to be clerical.
We'll move on to ordinance 3422. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance 15021 and authorizing the auditor to make interfund transfers, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no updates or comments or questions, we will adjourn the special session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning our special session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned with the special session, and finally, we can get on with our committee meetings. Not that the discussion hasn't all been important until then, but we're now moving on to, and I'll give just a second for, I know some of the folks were here to make comments about our mask ordinance, so thank you very much for attending tonight. And Law Director Elias, and thank you for being here with us to work us through the legislative conclusion to that. So right now, we're moving on to the Committee of the Whole, and the one item is the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. And this is a request to, for city council to consider passing a resolution. And what this is, is this is the mechanism by which we will be participating in the regional government, governance for the opioid settlement. And we are, Athens County is one of 73 of Ohio's 88 county, county governments who, and who have chosen to participate with the, with the Ohio One, the One Ohio, excuse me, Memorandum of Understanding. And what this does is by passing this resolution, it says we will take part in this. And this MOU, as it's called, Memorandum of Understanding, outlines the plan for distribution and allocation of the opioid settlement money. The One Ohio provides a mechanism and for, that 30% will be, funding will be set aside for community recovery. 55% of the settlement will be for statewide foundation funding. And then 15% will go to the state of Ohio to be used to leverage statewide buying power. And we have been provided with a copy, a sample resolution, which we will need to take part in. And Scott and Ryan, if we have that map at, at once, we are part of what's called District 10, and that includes Athens, Hocking, Vinson, Meigs, Jackson, Galia, and Lawrence Counties. So that's part of the region that we are part of for the One Ohio Foundation. And Mayor Patterson, any, any other comments or questions about this?
I'll be brief.
Comments?
Of course I have a comment. This is part of the process by which standing up a governance committee under One Ohio. I've spoken to city manager Scott Frank, the cities that, you know, have one representative, the counties have a representative, the county has a representative, the township has a representative, and then the villages put forward a representative. In talking with Scott Frank, I'll be the representative from the cities on the One Ohio Governance Committee. But this is just part of the process that we have to go through countywide to make sure that we're establishing our council of governments as well as, as moving forward to be able to receive the city's allocation for the opiate settlement. And that could be, if we get 70% compliance, it could be roughly $90,000. If it's more than that, it would be 100, if we get 100%, it would be a little bit more than $140,000, I believe. And one of the things, just to share with council, if you think about it, $90,000 or $100,000, it's not going to go a whole long way when it comes to treatment or standing up any new program. And so in working with the township trustees, the village managers slash mayors, and the mayor of Nelsonville, and working with the county, for the smaller municipalities, one of the best things that we could possibly do is pool our resources together because each political subdivision will get a share. And therefore, we can make a bigger impact by, by working together as opposed to working in isolation. So more to come on that as we move forward. But this is just part of the process for the settlement with this resolution.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, then what we will do is bring that resolution forward next week. Thank you. We'll move on to the Planning and Development Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Crowell, McCary, and Spielness. And I do have a map that was contained in that, so then you want them to call it up and just bring it up for their side?
I was just looking at it as well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so before we get to Mr. Reis, from Sunday Creek Horizons, we do have a couple of Title 49 applications that, these are the applications that we frequently consider here in the Planning and Development Committee. They are applications from property owners for use of the public right of way for different purposes. And these two are presented together and need to be considered together. And on our shared drive, we do have a letter from the Office of Code Enforcement and signed by our Director of Development and Code Enforcement regarding each of these and an accompanying map to sort of clarify what's happening. And if our, our wonderful Government Channel folks could put that map up on the screen, that would be very helpful. So what we have is an alleyway that is open up at the, the top end. It is open to Lincoln Avenue. But then further down, once we get to the line of property between the Myers and the Oakstrikes, that alley is, is blocked by a fence and is closed and does not go any farther. So the, the two applicants are the Mr. Montal and the Myers. And they are both requesting permits to use a portion of that alley that ends just beyond their property. And as is sometimes the case, when we have alleys that are not maintained for driving, we do have a, a situation where there's already some structures in this alley. And so the property owned by Mr. Montal, they are wanting to put some parking at the back of that property and to be able to access it via the alley from Lincoln. And the Myers also wish to have approval to continue to use the city right of way space back there for a, for parking. But also, there's currently an AC unit and a sidewalk already on the alleyway. So Code Enforcement has a recommended approval of permits together. They believe that both goals could be achieved. And because the alley does not continue beyond this property as it is, they have, have recommended approval of both applica, applications. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Member Spielness?
Thank you, Member Grace. So I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, so we're giving them the permission to use property that the city owns, but we don't use anymore, right?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe this is a really ignorant question, but why don't we sell it then?
Because the city wishes to maintain our right of way in case we would need it, but I will defer to, to our Service Safety Director for a more complete answer.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways that this body can, can divest of property, one of which is sale. Typically, streets are not sold, streets are vacated. So if this body, the citizens of Athens were to own a parcel, we could put it up for sale, but that has to be a public bidding type process. It's not something you can just say, I want to sell to that person, or the citizens want to sell to that person, which you'd have to do a public bidding process. If you vacate, ownership goes to the adjoining property owner. So if it's a portion of the, you know, a 10-foot wide alley, let's say, and, and this body votes to vacate that, the city would retain rights to keep utilities there, but the surface ownership would then transfer to the two adjoining property owners five feet on either side. There was a spate in the 1980s where there was quite a bit of vacation, and then for whatever reason, because we have a lot of paper alleys, what are called paper alleys or paper streets, where streets were platted during an original subdivision, but there was never a street or alley built. And so, and then I think that slowed down going into the 90s and 2000s because I think we got burned. At least the lore is that, that we got burned and that we had to go and buy back. We, the citizens of Athens, I say we, but the citizens of Athens had to go back and buy back some property that was vacated. And so there was a kind of a collective council decision not to vacate property willy-nilly and have a real good reason. Now, since then, there've been some good reasons to, to vacate property, and there may be some in the future. In this particular instance, while it is an unmaintained public alley, it is, it is still public, there is, it is still open and maintained to the south of this particular area. And this body granted a revocable license or rather a special use of the right of way permit to the property owner just to the north, Mr. Oakstrike, that, that Councilmember Grace mentioned previously, to build a fence. And then in the process of looking at this particular situation, you know, we, we deemed probably the best way ahead was that, that we do a special use of the right of way permit to, to allow for the uses that Mr. Montal and Ms. Myers would like to have, or Mrs. Myers would like to have, rather than some other, some other mechanism. Hopefully, that answered the question.
Yes, Members Spielness.
But then it says access to a proposed new structure. Would that be a possible barrier to whatever the city might want to use it for in the future if it's a new structure?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. So a special use of the right of way permit is, is revocable. In any instance, if the, the public deems, you know, either this body by rejecting it or the administration comes back to this body and says, hey, we need to revoke this special use of the right of way permit because there's a use here, without, at, at the cost of the owner, it, it can go away. And so it's not a, you know, obviously, they gotta, they gotta move it. But, but it's not something that's, becomes immovable. Now, I think in this particular instance, the structure that is proposed is actually on Mr. Montal's parcel. And this access is going to go to, through the public property to that particular proposed structure that's on that parcel. In the. In the case of the property on the other side, that is an encroachment that already exists. So basically, that property owner is asking this body for permission to have the things that they've already built, or perhaps a previous owner has already built in the public
So I believe the Montals would like to ensure that they have access through the alley to a structure that is on the property and for permission to park in the alley. And the Myers have an existing structure already built on the right-of-way and are seeking permission to keep that there, essentially. Are there any other questions from members of the committee? Yes, Member Crowell.
Not a question, just Mr. Oakstrike's name is misspelled. I don't know if we would want to correct that. Thank you.
Well, and I believe I saw that the
(inaudible)
The current permission for that was perhaps done in the name of the previous property owner, that it was not Mr. Oakstrike who put that there, but it was prior to. But I'm, so that may be an application that needs to be updated.
What will the record?
Yeah, but are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Other members of council? Yes, Member Swank.
Yeah, this is down in Ward Four, and I have walked the property extensively, met down there with Director Riggs, talked with both the Myers and Mr. Montal. The structure that Mr. Montal is planning to build is a home, a rental home. And if you're familiar with his properties, he builds very good properties and maintains them well. He just wants access from the back. In fact, he's willing to pay for the movement of a utility pole to help make this work as it is now. It's just one of those things that's kind of evolved. If you're familiar with Buckeye Lake, people started building decks out on the thing around Buckeye Lake. Well, over the years, that's kind of what's happened down here. What this will simply do is clean it up. All parties seem to be fine with it, and we're going to get another quality piece of housing on the near east side, simply with access from the rear and parking in the rear.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, so in one discussion, we have eliminated two agenda items, and shall now move on to a presentation from Sunday Creek Horizons, Mr. Rizes. And I believe you have been informed to keep this to 10 minutes.
Multiple times.
Just?
And I will try and keep it to less than 10 minutes. In fact, I'm intending to be very brief in my introduction and my comments, and then I'm happy to take questions and have more of a discussion. Just briefly, for anyone watching at home, my name is Zach Rizes. I'm a resident on Central Avenue. I've lived in the city of Athens for almost seven years now. I work for a consulting firm called Sunday Creek Horizons. We've spent the last six months working alongside the city of Athens on a specific contract that I'm here to talk about tonight. I was a little surprised. I did think that the audience was here to learn about this as a little... They all left.
Even Scott.
So to the point, yes, not everyone, not everyone's left. So, once again, with Sunday Creek Horizons, our firm is a consulting firm that focuses on issue advocacy as well as project management, community and economic development. I'd urge you to please check out our website, sundaycreekhorizons.com. And I did try and connect with at least some members of council in advance of tonight's meeting to introduce a little bit more about our firm and the fact that we're focused largely on southeast Ohio and Appalachian Ohio advocacy. Please, at any time, I'd love to sit down and have a more extensive conversation. What I've provided to council tonight is an overview, it's not exhaustive, but it's pretty in-depth, of much of the work that we've taken on in the last six months. On the inside of the first page, you'll see a table of contents that just outlines what's included in this report. We have an executive summary. Much of that language was actually pulled from our initial introduction to the city about why we feel that this is a compelling undertaking for the city and for the broader community. We have a list of outcomes. We have a log of meetings we've undertaken. And then I have included in this packet as well the original proposal, some of the work that we've been doing more recently with Representative Edwards to bring some money to the Armory project that's not city taxpayer dollars, but actually from the capital bill, which is a bill that's passed every other year at the state level. Representative Edwards, for what it's worth, is very supportive of this project, and we're very grateful for his support. I'm happy to talk some about that as well, if you'd like to go into detail about that aspect of our work. And then finally, the last section on here, you'll see Blue Dot Summary, incorporation documents, fiscal sponsorship and fiscal sponsorship agreement. What those documents are is really a culmination of the work that we were hired to do, which was to address a recognized need in the city, a need for co-working space that is a space for remote workers, a space for workers who possibly live out in the county and need a place to access high-quality internet, and also a space that will allow for some small business and nonprofit incubation. This is something that I know many council members and the administration is familiar with, Athens Works in Uptown Athens does this. Athens Works has, the organizers of that entity have expressed that they are closing their doors or are very close to doing so. And so that conversation about remote work and the need to have a place for folks to live, work, and play, if I can borrow from Mayor Patterson's phrasing, overlapped or intersected with the city's desire to bring money and resources and a plan for use to the Athens Armory. And again, I know many members of council are familiar already with this project, but just to summarize very briefly, we've arrived through months of work as well as collaboration with the Voynovich School, who published a paper that council received a briefing on about remote work and the possibilities for the region and the city. We arrived at a sort of a draft structure that's still in formation for how the Armory can remain in the public trust and serve a deep and abiding purpose, a purpose that will grant space for nonprofits to grow and to get access to resources, a space where young folks such as myself might be able to go and work their jobs that are remote, that are, you know, housed in Washington DC or LA. And those are actually real examples of friends of mine, not just cities that I'm naming. You know, a place as well where there can be public and private events, and finally, a place that is honoring the folks who moved through that building in its long tenure in military service as a national, a home of the Ohio National Guard. And so we've worked very diligently to ensure that all of those aspects, those facets that I just listed, will be able to live together in the Armory. And we're doing that through sort of a, I don't want to call it complicated, but definitely an arrangement that's been reached through a lot of dialogue between Blue Dot, which is a new nonprofit organization that's going to actually operate the remote workspace, as well as the administration, numerous nonprofit leaders in the community, and the Athens County Foundation, who have agreed to sponsor, to the fiscal sponsorship of Blue Dot while that organization gets its legs underneath it, fundraises, and then ultimately applies for 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS, which is a somewhat lengthy process for anyone who's familiar. I'll sort of, I'll stop there. There's a lot of detail in this packet, and I definitely have lots of items that I'd like to touch on, but maybe if any members of the committee or members of council have questions specifically about our scope of work, any successes we saw, or any challenges we saw, I could take the next few minutes to talk about those.
Thank you, Mr. Rizes. Are there any members of the committee, first of all, that would, yes, Member Crowell?
Thank you, Member Grace. Thank you, Mr. Rizes, for being here today and for meeting with me a couple of times about this project, and I appreciate the information. Last time we met, you had not yet toured the Armory with Mr. Edwards, so I'm glad to hear that that went well. I know you were trying to reach out to Senator Hoagland as well. Is it, am I understanding that he's not been able to?
He also came through the Armory and is also similarly very supportive. I believe his words were something along the lines of, "I've told you this multiple times, I will absolutely support it. You guys do the legwork, bring it to us, and we'll get it done." Something like that. I'm paraphrasing.
I'd be a little more colorful.
A little more colorful.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the committee at this time? I also have had the opportunity to meet and discuss this with Mr. Rizes a couple of different times. Are there questions from other members of council, though? Yes?
On the first page, or I guess it's page number two, you talk about, brought this idea of the city of Athens in order to accelerate the remote work and outdoor recreation economy. Is that part of your, a couple of questions, is that part of your scope of work?
That's a really great question, and thank you. And can you refer specifically to the paragraph?
It's the next to the last paragraph on page number two. Starts out Sunday Creek Horizons and ends up Appalachian Ohio.
Awesome, absolutely. Well, it's tangentially part of the scope of work. So while we are not specifically in this contract focusing on, you know, any kind of outdoor work development, I would point to, you know, the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, the local Council of Governments, COG, that's focused on developing outdoor recreation assets. The theory, and I think it stands true, we've pulled from a couple of examples of other communities that are focused on this, is that there's overlap between places where folks can work remotely, can also experience the great outdoors, and can live affordably. There are multiple communities in Appalachian Ohio that are building similar ecosystems. So I guess to answer your question, Councilman Swank, we've, in this executive summary, we've really wanted to emphasize that it's all a symbiotic ecosystem, and we're trying to play our part helping build that ecosystem for the city of Athens and Athens County.
Would those outdoor pursuits be restricted to traditional outdoor pursuits such as biking, skiing, that sort of thing? Or would that also include things that Council Member Crowell, the mayor, and myself are experiencing, and that is youth sports, where people are fleeing Athens, because we have to go to Logan this year for volleyball, or fleeing Athens to, and you go to Parkersburg, I know, for soccer a lot, to see these things as opposed to having a sports hub here? Would that be included in this, or is that a separate deal altogether?
Well, that's not specifically part of the work that we do. I think it's an incredibly smart strategy for the city to pursue if there are funds and resources available to build those kinds of facilities in or around Athens. I would point to the Bailey's Trail system as a phenomenal example of a system that is being designed to be available for the International Mountain Bike Association, and that is a youth, they do youth events. But I do know, to your point, around the southeast Ohio region in Logan, for example, there are all kinds of sports facilities that draw lots of attention, youth or adult. And, you know, kudos to those communities for having those facilities. I'd love for us to have some of them here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Yes, Members F?
Thank you, Member Grace. I just wanted to thank Mr. Rizes for coming down here and giving us the opportunity to chat with you. I feel like I'm sort of echoing what other council members have said, but I also had the opportunity to sit down and talk with Mr. Rizes about this. And I believe Mayor Patterson said in a previous week that this is the closest that we've ever come to actually having the Armory turn into something viable. And I just wanted to thank you and also everybody at Sunday Creek Horizons for putting in the enormous amount of work and time and research and writing for actually making this happen. So thank you for getting us to this point, and I hope we can get us over the goal line to keep talking about sports.
Goal line.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I do teed that up.
You know, I think that Mr. Rizes is being modest in terms of the engagement, you know, to have Senator Hoagland come down and actually tour through the Armory was really, you know, quite the feat. And, you know, congratulations to you, to you for making that happen. The other thing that's worth sharing with council is that Sunday Creek Horizons has been working very closely with RVC Architecture here in the city of Athens, because RVC has so much history with that building, you know, from designs of what was potentially to be the Southeast Ohio History Center, which was going to be, you know, located in the Armory back in the early 2000s, to, again, looking at different options for what the Armory could be. And also, it's Zach who's been working with Schoolie Caldwell, which is, you know, a state mover and shaker in the architectural design world, and one that's certainly recognized by a lot of the legislative body. And so, you know, you've done a lot already, and I see, I think what you see in terms of how we move forward and finally get the Armory back open to the public again, and get it back in the hands of the public trust that it belongs in.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as a brief reminder, the reason that this is on our committee agenda is because we have the ordinance that had a second read tonight, that is to extend the city's contract agreement with Sunday Creek Horizons. Mr. Rizes, if you would like to just take a couple minutes, very briefly, to explain to us what you want to do with that extension? I think that might be the important thing, and I unfortunately won't be here next week when it's up for third reads, so I want to sort of highlight the reason for the extension now, if we have a few more moments.
Definitely. And thank you, Councilmember Grace. I was going to take a moment to speak on this, I was hoping to. So our, the last six months of work have really been focused on building, in a sense, really from the ground up, the entity that can collaborate with the city to do the management of the space, the co-working space, and probably the event space as well. And that was important because we discovered very early on in our dialogue about this that there wasn't necessarily, for what we were envisioning, there wasn't necessarily a recipient or a partner entity. There are lots of organizations that work in the city very diligently, who, you know, are allies in this effort, but taking on the operation of a building is a challenge and takes work. And most of our, I don't want to generalize, but many of our organizations locally and regionally are taxed. They're doing more than they have the resources to really undertake. So we started there. Now, the goal is clear. The goal is to find the dollars to actually renovate the space. And I believe that within the next week or two, we anticipate having final renovation cost estimates from RVC architects. We're anticipating a project cost of somewhere between $3 million to $3.5 million for the full building. And we'd really prefer not to do it in phases. We don't want to do one floor and then a piece here and a piece there. The goal would be to do it all at once. And my goal, and really what I think our firm is, you know, seeking to undertake here is to make sure that as much of that money as possible is, comes from other sources, either grant dollars, state or federal. There's a lot of opportunity right now. The state of Ohio is, I don't want to, well, flush with cash is really a truth, coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act, and those funds are being divvied up and distributed as we speak. We're talking to state agencies and state decision-makers every single day as they are formulating their plans for where those funds should go. Then there are additional funding opportunities, the capital bill, the state operating budget next year. These are opportunities that are a little bit, you have to know how to access them in order to gain access to them. And just to editorialize and go off my own script for a moment, you know, I would not have known how to do this a couple of years ago. I'm in a very blessed position where I'm working with some phenomenal people who are all collectively, myself included, dedicating to advocating for and advancing the needs of Appalachian communities. And if I could be so bold, I would say we're doing it in a way that most Appalachian communities have not had access to in a very long time. I'm very proud of the work that we do, and I'm very proud of our ability to bring the knowledge and the resources that have been mostly sort of housed within the three Cs and the focus the three Cs and the folks that live there and work there to the many communities that we work with. So that's my editorializing. I feel very strongly about that. I'm very proud of what we do. My goal is to now, over the next six months, while some of these funding decisions are being made, to guide the conversation and inform the conversation and socialize the Athens Armory project to the point where we can actually receive some additional funds from the state. I can't guarantee how that's going to turn out. I don't know for sure. We know we have strong support from the legislature. We know that there are going to be additional dollars distributed to the Ohio Department of Development for creative downtown revitalization projects. We don't know exactly what all these funding pots are going to look like, and the funding timelines are up in the air. A lot of the reason for that is that the legislature is dealing with their whole redistricting challenge right now. And it's put them on a bit of a delay making other decisions. So it is a bit long-winded. I'm sorry for that. But over the next six months, you know, our intention is to really elevate this project and seek in every possible source, state and federal dollars, that'll help bring it home and avoid the city having to take out, you know, a loan that you guys would have to deliberate. You know, we're trying to avoid you having to do that.
Okay, with that additional information, are there any other last-minute questions for Mr. Reizes? Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here tonight.
That concludes planning and development.
All right. We'll move on to City and Safety Services chaired by Councilmember McCary and joined by Councilmembers Grace, Swank, and Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Our City and Safety Services Committee has just two items on our agenda today, two new items, the first being the Washington County Jail Contract and its use by our city of Athens. And I'll turn to Director Stone for an update about this item.
This is a pretty standard agreement that every couple of years this body authorizes the administration to enter into, that allows us to utilize the Washington County jail facilities for both male and female inmates when there's space available, and then subsequently pay Washington County to house inmates there.
So this is a pretty straightforward one, but would welcome any questions or comments from our committee members.
I guess I just have one. Thank you, Member McCary. I believe that in the past, this relationship has often been used for female inmates. And is there another facility being built maybe in the Nelsonville area that in the future might?
You know, I've heard about that facility. My understanding is it's a, it's in the Ohio Department of Corrections versus actually a jail that's in the county system that we would typically enter into. And so you enter into the jail system, and then you subsequently go into the Ohio Department of Corrections. I don't know that for sure, Member Crowell, and I will research that and get back to you on that. It is a problem. Jail bed space is a significant problem for both male and female, females particularly, in recent years. And one of the challenges associated with COVID, in the midst of all the other challenges with COVID, is that the, you know, the state system basically kept certain level of offenders from moving from the jail system into the State Department of Corrections system, and basically said, "You keep certain levels of felons, you know, in your system that typically they would pull into the state system." And that subsequently blocks space for the, you know, the random drunk or whoever that you typically would end up needing to take to jail because of their behavior is dangerous to the public themselves. Some nights you can't because of the fact that they're full. And so it's important for us to have these agreements with all several different facilities because that flexibility is necessary in different evenings.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. And just to that point, yeah, the regional jail is frequently full. And I believe that the change regarding the lower felony level offenses is not specific to COVID restrictions, though, but is a part of sort of an ongoing state process by which they pass some of the cost down to the local level by keeping some of the incarcerated individuals in a regional jail rather than in the state prison system. They keep the cost at the county level for that incarceration. And so I believe that's a change that is going to continue even without COVID, whenever that time happens to come. But also, I think that it's important for individuals to know that when they're, even if the jail is full, when law enforcement arrests someone who is a danger to the community, then phone calls are often made to prosecutors and judges who then contact the warden, and they do find room. So I know that that is the practice in the case of offenders of domestic violence, for instance, where there is a particular concern that a victim might be at risk. So while our jail is consistently quite full, and there is particularly a shortage of beds for women inmates, and that's the case in many county jails around us. It's not just our regional jail. But we want to have these agreements whenever possible so that we can look to other options.
Thank you, Member Grace. Questions or comments from other committee members? Other council members?
Thank you, Member Grace. I was looking over the first page, and I think there's a slight inconsistency. It's in the Bulletin Two. It says, "The cost to be paid to the county by the contractor shall be the amount of $68." And then in parentheses next to that, it has $83 per day. So I don't know if that's like a weird mix-up, or it looks like the mayor has something to say about it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And I really appreciate your attention to detail. I just noticed that myself, and I was going to bring that up, hence my raising my hand. We believe that's $83. I will get clarification on that because that does need to be amended in this contract. Otherwise, there's going to be a major discrepancy between $68 and $83. So we'll get that addressed.
Other questions from council members? Administration? How about the audience on this point? Terrific. We'll move on to our second agenda item, Recreation Advisory Board Membership. And for that, I believe, Councilmember Swank, would you like to begin this conversation?
Yes, sir. It'll be very, very short. Back in the fall, the seven members of the Arts, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did kind of a self-assessment and identified the areas that they individually felt they were strong in and represented. And then we put together a list of the areas that we were missing representation, and it was quite a comprehensive list. I can't remember if that was in September or October. But anyway, the next month, we met with the mayor, and we had a long conversation about a lot of things. But one of the things we talked about was casting a wide net as possible when we looked for people to serve on the APR Advisory Board. At the end of the day, it is the mayor's recommendation which council confirms, and we're trying to get as many good people as possible. We put together a questionnaire, which is now on the city website. The questionnaire was sent to, questionnaire, an application, I should say. The application was also sent to the Athens City Schools. And what happened when Tom Gibbs got this, he distributed, and within an hour, we had two outstanding candidates express interest. But we had to tell them both no. And the reason we had to tell them both no is because of one word in the job description. In code in 3.07.42A, it says, "All members of the committee shall be electors of the city of Athens, except that two of the members may reside outside the corporate limits but within Athens Township." Both of these people live in Athens County, but not in Athens Township. One lives barely over the line in Canaan Township. What I'm suggesting that this committee consider is simply changing one word, change from Athens Township to Athens County. Give you an example, if someone lives in the plains, part of the plains, they live in Athens Township, they could apply. But in another part of the plains, they live in Dover Township and could not. In fact, if you know where Big Chimney Bakery is, where it used to be, Matt Rapacelli's place, that's Canaan Township. Even though that person could work in Athens, pay Athens taxes, they couldn't serve on the APR Advisory Board. This is not being brought forward to promote any individual, but to open up our options for people that could apply and that the board could consider, and then pass on to the mayor for his appointment, if appropriate. One word, change township to county.
I think that's very clear, but do any committee members have questions? Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
The Environment and Sustainability Commission has a similar stipulation for membership, and that it's for the, for city of Athens residents. It doesn't get into township. That's interesting. I didn't know how many of our commissions or boards get into specific townships. I'm not sure as a city entity if we want to say county for, I mean, maybe for the Rec Board. I'm not sure about that. But it is interesting. If there's any information about how many of our boards or commissions actually specifies townships, I'd be interested to hear.
None. I've gone through all of them. And in fact, you mentioned sustainability. It says nine members are appointed by Athens City Council. Six shall be residents of the city. Three may reside outside the corporate limits.
Right. So it could be as far as you want it.
Yeah, as far as you wanted, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And I believe-
So there may be something. I don't know.
There's only one? No, you're correct. There's only, that's the only one that specifies Athens Township, or Township of any township. I mean, the city has two townships, Canaan and Athens.
Yes, and I believe that when we're talking specifically even about recreation and who utilizes those services, that makes sense to extend the opportunity to serve on this advisory board to folks who are in the county. Any other comments or questions from committee members? Councilmember Grace?
I guess I would, I would just say that, well, it certainly does make sense to extend it to membership outside the city. I would say that it should, that should be kept limited and not get to a position where it's not a majority.
Well, it says two.
Yeah, but I'm just emphasizing, I think that it should remain limited and not opened up entirely.
Yeah, just a change of order. So if I ask a point of order going forward, just so I do this right, do we need to take this to the law director? And I don't think we need to take it to the auditor in terms of getting this to the ordinance.
Probably to the law director.
But other than that, we would be fine.
Right, because it doesn't have any financial implications. I think you got a couple of other comments.
Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Member McCary. Just quickly, for everyone's information, and I think you're aware of this, is that there are commissions and boards that are city council commissions and boards, and then there are mayoral commissions and boards. I don't know if there is a real distinction there, that we don't want to be consistent, but I would just think that maybe we'd want to be consistent. Does the Environment Sustainability Commission have some special designation that people can be from anywhere, and that for the Rec Board, we're going to say Athens County? I'm just wondering if you don't want to be consistent between, between those. Member McCary, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I agree with you, Councilmember Crowell. You know, and that's, that's one of the big things you'll see with all of the boards and commissions. There's nuances all over the place. J-PAC is a great example, you know, which has eight individuals who are from the university community, eight individuals from the city. And in there, one of those members can be a commuter. Well, define commuter for me. Someone who drives to work every day, yet you live in the city, or is it someone who's from outside? And that was the intent. It's someone who lives outside the city. I would recommend changing that language to, you know, to individuals who do not live, you know, in, within the corporate limit. So it's consistent with yours. And again, at the end of the day, it is a committee that I appoint individuals to, and so therefore I'm fine with a change like this. I would also, again, highly recommend, and I know, Councilmember McCary, you've been leading the charge on this, is I still highly recommend that we start looking at a lot of things in code to where it's gender neutral. I have to go back and look at this one now to see, is there language in there that is gender-specific? I don't recall, but we, you know, we should be looking at all those things. So I think there's probably more editing to that committee unto itself, or that council, board. But anyway, that's my thoughts on that, is that, you know, again, since it's a body that I constitute with individuals that are volunteers who want to work on the Rec Advisory Board, that's fine. I'm good with this. I would just, again, state that we should be consistent. And I like the language that the Environment Sustainability Commission has in theirs. And, remember, Swank, it's not a bad thing to steal from another committee or council or board.
Yes, I believe I, in my own time on council, have noticed other discrepancies when it comes to commission composition, including having a council rep or not. So I think this is an opportunity for us all to think about those commissions that we're connected to and make recommendations through this process, checking with council president to figure out which committee might be the best to come through, because some of them aren't always clear. But I think we do have one more comment or question?
No, I was basically going to say what you did. You know, I mean, Member Crowell brought it up, having, and then others said it, that having some consistency in language of membership and how that does seem to make a lot of sense to me. So however is that most efficient, effective way to do that, I was-
I do have one. I don't have a lot of dog in the fight on boards and commissions and that sort of thing. However, you know, I've worked in the city for a number of years. I've observed a significant number of people who live far outside the city of Athens who express opinions about the city of Athens. And in some instances, they're valuable, and in some instances, we're better off not to interact with them, and they just waste our time. Now, I live outside the city of Athens. I work here. I feel fortunate that I've had the opportunity to do so for my career since I've been here. So, you know, I'm not saying that people outside the city of Athens are not valuable to the organization, but when it comes to selecting those folks, mere interest shouldn't be the driver. Obviously, you know, this administration, the mayor, is not going to appoint anybody who isn't qualified and capable for the ones that he appoints. But in the future, you know, beyond us, beyond all of you, I'd hate to put something that, you know, if someone volunteers, they just get to be on it, and they could be from, you know, some community, because there's some, there's some pretty interesting calls that we get from folks that live far outside the city and express their opinions to our staff.
Thank you. It sounds like there might be even some benefit to sort of highlighting what points we are consistent on across commissions in terms of, for example, Councilmember Grace's point that perhaps there should be a limit to the number of folks who are not within the city of Athens. So I think this is something for us to continue thinking about, and individual recommendations for commissions can be brought forward at future dates. Do we have any other questions from the audience, I believe, or comments? Doesn't look like it. So with that, I'll bring this committee meeting to a close.
Thank you. Well, now move on to our final committee meeting tonight, Finance and Personnel. This is chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Zip, and Spelness.
Thank you, President Isley. We have a few items on our agenda tonight, the first being the Fire Headquarters Bond. I'm sure everyone is aware that on the May 3, 2022 primary will be a public safety, capital improvements, and equipment levy. And we want to be prepared, should this levy be passed, to move legislation through to purchase, to sell bonds in order to finance the proposed fire department headquarter project. We had a very good meeting with Bond Counsel, Mr. Mike Burns of Baird and Company Incorporated. He's been a financial advisor to the city on the bond market for a number of projects, including the 2016 Pool Project. He has done a very comprehensive evaluation of key metrics within the city and, you know, compared it to various bond rating services- city and, um, uh, you know, compared it to various bond rating, um, services to estimate what our rating would come out, um, and he is very confident, uh, and, um, congratulatory towards the auditor's office and the mayor's office and city council for, uh, the city's current financial, um, status. Um, he believes that the city will get a rating that will make this, um, uh, bond a very good financial opportunity for the city. Uh, in fact, he believes that the city may be in a slightly stronger position in 2022 than it was even in 2016, pre-pandemic, uh, in order to, to have a higher, a high rating to get a good deal on the, um, on the bonds. Um, he did, you know, of course, I think we're all aware that interest rates are going to go up, and we, and this is part of his recommendation to the city that we get on top of this early. I mean, now, we, and we're, I'm, I'm talking about legislation, I'm talking about moving things forward, but of course, um, everything is contingent upon that levy passing. So we're not trying to say that all this is happening, we, we, we do need that levy to pass, but if that levy does pass on, on May 3rd, we want to be ready to go soon after that, because it's in our best financial interest, uh, to have everything lined up, um, in order to get ahead of any, certainly, uh, federal interest rate changes. Um, so a schedule, uh, might look at introducing, um, in, in, on May 9th, uh, right after the primary, um, discussing this in committee and having the three readings, uh, into late June, so we would be having this, um, passed prior to our July recess. Um, Mr. Burns indicated that it takes about 45 to 70 days to complete the financing for this, um, and, uh, we are recommending, uh, the, the 20-year bonds, um, and he, based on the city's, um, initial estimates, uh, did a number of scenarios based on, um, the project amount estimates being at 6.5 million, 7 million, or 7.5 million. Uh, Mr. Burns did, um, recommend, you know, um, overshooting and not undershooting, overbudgeting, not underbudgeting, because we know the way the construction costs go, et cetera. Um, so, um, does the city administration want to add anything before we, um, go to council members for questions, or are there any, does it matter?
I think you summed it up really well. Again, back in 2016, we were anticipating dropping down two ratings, um, from AA2 to A1. Uh, we flew out to Moody's, um, but it was with Michael Burns and his coaching of both the auditor and myself, and we were successful at, at hanging on to AA2. This time around, they anticipated dropping to, well, Moody's, um, is basically anticipating that we would go to AA3, which is a drop of one, but again, uh, Mr. Burns feels confident with the, you know, the, the notching rates, ratings to where we will actually stay at AA2. And this time, we won't have to fly out to Chicago to go pitch this to Moody's, we can actually do it virtually, which means I still have to wear a coat and tie, I just won't have to fly to Chicago.
Other questions from committee members about this fire department headquarters financing? Yes, Members F.
Thank you, Member McCrull. Uh, I just, not directly related to the bond, but related to the fire, the fire headquarters, I'm just, I like to push the information, get out so people are aware of it. I believe we have a tentative date for the next open house discussion of it of April 14th, I think that's what it was said.
13.
13th, April 13th, so just so that people are aware, you know, still going to be talking about it, so if you want to, that's your opportunity to come do it, and air your grievances or support or what have you.
Thank you, Members F. Uh, that's a very important, um, point, is that this, what we're talking about is not selecting and finalizing the location of this, this is about financing, and, uh, there are public meetings going forward to get more input on, uh, proposed locations. Other members, all done on committee? Other members and Councilmember Swank?
Too quick, Woods. Uh, is it too early in the process for Mr. Burns to speculate as to what rate we might get?
I mean, there is speculation, um, the estimated all-in true interest cost is 2.76% on a 20-year, 7.5 million project finance amount.
All right, then the second question is, by law, do we have to wait till after the election to start this process?
We discussed this, yeah?
I don't think we have to. Um, we, we certainly have to wait to, to actually float the bonds until after there is a repayment source, and so, you know, no investor is going to go and, and basically give us the cash if there isn't a revenue stream associated with the passing, but if you wanted to start earlier, um, I think one of the discussions we had was, you know, we don't want to presume, uh, that something would, you know, pass in, in a primary, um, and, and maybe, um, you know, starting readings on, on seeking a bond would be presumptuous, so, but I'll leave that obviously to the, to the members.
Well, the reason I asked this, or actually two reasons, number one, uh, with what we're seeing in terms of projected interest rates, I have the funniest feeling come, uh, May the 4th, uh, people are going to get in line. Second thing is, and who knows, there may not be a May 3rd primary.
Yeah, that's right.
There may not be. If this redistricting thing doesn't get straightened out, there is talk of moving the thing to either two primaries, kicking the whole thing to August, or a special one in July and another in August, I mean, they're all over the board in Columbus right now. We're talking to some lobbyists today, and, and they don't know. And I'm just wondering if we kick it out that much further and then start the, you know, the three readings, which is five weeks, and then 45 to 70 days, before you know it, it's Christmas time. I understand what you're saying about presumptuous, we don't want to say to the public, well, this thing's going to pass, but there might be a way to message that better, that we're protecting public's funds by, by doing this.
I, I don't disagree.
Just a thought.
Yeah, Mr. Burns did speculate that, that, that by late June or early July, we might be able to begin to, to, to sell the bonds at that time, not wait until December, but yeah, I don't know what, what's going to happen to interest rates and how much money we can save by, um, you know, getting some of these pieces done.
I think, but what might be helpful too is, uh, to check with Mr. Burns, to see if this has been done before, because I think that way, the, the overwhelming thought was that it, it would appear presumptuous, and I, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Swank, about the precariousness of our, of our primary, so, um, you've got a kind of delicate act right now, so, right, so maybe we can ask Mr. Burns further?
We can.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll reach out to him.
Yes, Member McCary? Thank you, I appreciate the effort that's gone into getting multiple sort of scenarios covered and overestimating our costs, I just was looking for clarification, understanding that this is not about where the fire station headquarters would go, but is that a consideration and a potential change for an interest rate? For example, does the interest rate potentially change because it's in a floodplain versus not? Do you have any sense of that?
I do not have an answer to that question, I don't know if Director Stone does.
So, we have flood damage prevention legislation in our code that requires us to fill to one foot above for any type of development that would occur in the floodplain, and we wouldn't build anything otherwise. Uh, for a public safety facility, flood damage, uh, prevention legislation requires fill to two feet above, so, uh, post-construction, it would not be in a floodplain.
So there will be additional costs for that site to raise it up, but that's taken into the, any, any property that would be used for the purpose?
Not necessarily in, in change in interest rate.
Good question.
And because it's built above, you don't have to buy federal flood insurance. You know, those things that sit below that are in the floodplain are the places that when you, when you, when you give, um, financing against them, a bank would require you to carry federal flood insurance. In this case, because it will be above that financing, um, whether it's a bond or whatever is the source of financing, there's no requirement to buy federal flood insurance, there's doubt at that point.
Thank you.
And Director Stone's, you know, department, um, has looked at how we could do the, you know, this project could be done all at once, it could be done in, in, in a couple of different phases, the first phase being sort of that site preparation, um, so there's a number of ways to, to do the, to do the project. Okay, other questions? Yes, Member Reisner?
Uh, I remember when the, uh, we worked on the bond back in 2016, and, uh, I seem to recall, I, I may be wrong about this, that the day that the bonds actually went on sale, they were gone within about two hours. So I don't think there's going to be any delay in raising that capital, that capital is going to be there within half a day, once they go on sale. So I, I think that's a, a really good thing in our part.
Councilmember Reisner, I'm glad you remember that, because I remember that well as well. And one of the other things, they, not only did they go quickly, we also got a, a large number, percentage of all the bonds that came in that were premium bonds, which basically gave a credit to the city.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Which, uh, was really interesting to, to observe. I suspect that they'll go rather quickly this time as well.
I do too.
And I assume this is because municipal bonds are just such a good investment, they're so.
Well, that and our rating, that rating, that AA2 is, boy, that's gold, you know, for a, for a city this size with our income. Be nice to kick it up a little higher, but, yeah, you know.
I'll do my best.
Uh, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are appropriations, a number of separate, um, uh, pieces here, the Arts Parks and Recreation Department, as we, um, I think I've discussed previously, or maybe it's just in separate meetings, um, but is looking to update their, uh, the software that they use for all of their programming, all of their youth sports and other programs. Um, and the appropriations would split, uh, the overall $30,000 cost, uh, between, uh, Fund 270, which is Recreation, and Fund 273, uh, which is the, um, Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund. Uh, so this is, um, giving the Recreation Department the ability, um, to pay for not only, um, the new software and then the contract, uh, to, to have that software maintained over time, uh, but also professional services to get training on how to set everything up. Um, so the first item here really is those first two, 15,000 and 15,000, uh, for a total of 30 for new software. Any questions from the committee on this item?
Does this include their, uh, membership software? Is this part of?
I guess it's all encompassing, but I don't know exactly, all of their mayor's saying yes.
This allows us to switch, um, from Active, ActiveNet, which we've used since the kind of mid 2000s, um, and we've had some challenges with ActiveNet, and, and it's, it's not a low-cost, uh, system either. Um, so CivicRec is at least as, as, um, uh, at least as good a value, if not a little bit better, um, number one. So number two, it fits in with CivicPlus, which is the, the software that we're already using for the city website and a variety of other things that, that the government channel uses as they drive our, um, our, our front-facing, um, you know, web presence. And then lastly, um, this $15,000 from these two funds is like, is kind of that transition cost, um, but otherwise, there's always been money in the budget to be able to pay for that subscription, so, and that, and that won't change as we sunset the one and, and move to this one. We're trying to move this now, because the contract runs out, uh, I believe at the end of June, um, with, uh, with, uh, ActiveNet, and this will allow a transition, um, of data and such, so that you don't see a blip when that, one switches over to the other one.
Director Stone, is, is this the type of software, I can't imagine that every software in the city, but something large like this that BSSI should have some input on?
They've already, we, you know, they're, they're already familiar with, uh, CivicPlus and that, and that system that drives kind of our web pages, so it's not, um, uh, and because it's a plug into that, I think, I think it'll be fine.
Yes, Member Swank?
Does this have some CRM functions in it? Uh, because we've always talked about generating revenue, are there some sales and marketing pieces to this too, or is it just?
I, I will check, um, you, you know, I, I don't know that there's a CRM component of it. I know that there's, you know, point-of-sale, um, capability and such to be able to go and, and, you know, have all that interconnect, but to be able to go and say, you know, Andy Stone signed up for yoga, and so therefore, uh, Andy Stone should be, have yoga, that has, you know, things sent to his house for the next time that it comes, I, I don't know that it's got that capability, but I'll, I'll check. I didn't sign up for yoga.
Yes, I'm delighted to see you there. Other questions from non-committee members, anyone else? Okay, moving on to the next item, um, Arts West is looking to do their very own production, um, theatrical production, uh, this summer, and their, um, this appropriation would be $6,000 to the Recreation Fund, um, this would be largely for supplies and services, um, Emily Beveridge, the, the project, um, specialist at Arts West, has been very creative at finding new ways to use the space. Uh, of course, the space can be rented for shows, and it has been many times, but then all of the revenue that comes from tickets, et cetera, goes to the people who rented the space, and Arts West is just receiving the, uh, the rental, uh, payment. So this would be a chance, not only to, um, for the city to put on its own show, uh, but also to receive the revenue from, uh, from the tickets for that show. Any questions about this item? Yes, Member Spielness?
Uh, this is really a question, it's just that I did spend some time with Emily this past week, and, uh, as you noted, they are trying to transition from it being primarily rental to really having more in-house activities like this, so that they can amplify the use, uh, largely for kids after school, for one thing, the middle school's close by, as you know, uh, but to, as you noted, add some more revenue to their, their programming. So, uh, I was impressed with her ideas and thoughts about this, so I'm very supportive of, of this and, and their direction.
Yes, Members F.
Thank you, Member McCrull. Just wondering, do we know what production they're doing?
I do not know. Yes, Member McCary?
Yes, I believe this will be Fun Home, happening during Pride Month in June, and I believe our LGBT center at Ohio University will be supporting it as well.
Excellent. Fun Home.
Yes. Short for funeral home.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but it's.
It went from a comedy to a very dark comedy.
Other questions? Yes, Member Grace?
Not, not a question either, but just, um, my daughter is in sixth grade at the middle school and participates in two different after-school, um, programming opportunities that have been happening at Arts West, and one is a sixth-grade drama club that is, um, organized by Tantrum Theater and, but taking place at Arts West, and I just want to commend, um, Emily Beveridge and, um, for really working to grow these after-school programs, because it's, it's such a fantastic opportunity for the, especially the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders this year, uh, to be able to walk to Arts West. Uh, she has a drawing class on Tuesdays, and I know they offer ceramics, um, and, and then the, the middle school drama club has been meeting there, and I know that, um, the drama club had a production there tonight. I fortunately got to see my daughter in the production yesterday, but I missed tonight's performance, but, um, it's, is really a successful partnership, and I look forward to, um, continued productions at Arts West.
Members Swank?
The point you just brought up, um, brings up a real interesting issue. The number one thing preventing young people participating in what the city offers and the school offers after school is transportation. Uh, going forward, as we build this out, I think that's something we need to take a look at, and I don't know if the city bus system goes to the plains and jancy, but that's what keeps kids, and, and my bet is, if we took a, a, a roster of those kids participating, and what their home elementary school is, there's a lot of kids that aren't participating simply because of transportation issues. And, uh, you know, going forward, I think that's something we need to, we would start talking about equity and inclusion and all of that, that's a group of kids we often forget. And, uh, there, there's so much research that shows if you involve kids in good things, their chances of being involved in bad things decreases exponentially. So, yeah, I, I, your kids and my kids or grandkids, that's not an issue, but for many of the kids out a little bit, it is a huge issue. So going forward, when we're doing these things, that's something, we talk about art, incorporating art into our buildings and things, transportation or access to, to these kind of programming, I think is very, very important going forward.
You make a good point, Mr. Swank, I, I, I thought actually you were going to make a, a separate point, which is pointing out that it, it does at least allow kids who are at the middle school, right, to walk to Arts West and then maybe be picked up by parents after work, or, but, but, but providing them other, yeah, other means of transportation, but it is great, because you can just, you know, walk down to Arts West after school, so it's very convenient in that way. Yes, Mayor? Yes, Mayor?
So, we, when we started, you know, really driving hard after-school programming at Arts West in particular, a few years ago, which was kind of the catalyst to get this thing going, you know, a major goal was to try to take advantage of, you know, West Elementary School students and a need for, you know, after-school programming specifically, and we ran into that transportation problem. You asked the question about the city bus system, and the city bus system, being a rural transit organization funded through, through ODOT ultimately, and federal, federal, federal rural transit money, is not allowed to function as a charter service. So, we tried to go and say, hey, can we go and pay extra money to have this system go, and, and there are laws associated with competing with other bus systems if you go and take it and charter that bus to move a group, and it really sounds pretty stupid, frankly, I, I think it's pretty stupid, but, you know, I didn't write the federal law. And, and at the time, the school district was, you know, overwhelmed managing just getting people to where they needed to go inside the school district with their school buses. School buses, the school district could move people, but, you know, they have a hard enough time, you know, getting them where they need to go with the limited number of drivers and buses they have. So, it is a challenge, and it's something that we'll continue to work on. I would agree with Member Swank that it's a barrier, but it's, it's a hard nut to crack.
That's different.
The Athens Transit does go to the Plains, and when my daughter was at the high school, she would walk to the Plains Library, where there's a bus stop, and, and ride the Athens Transit back into town to, to take classes at OU. So, it is, it is an option for high schoolers who are capable of walking from the high school to the Plains Library, and then, as we've discussed, the middle school is in close enough proximity to Arts West, but the elementary school students that, it would, it would be great to be able to have them safely transported for after-school programming as well.
Other comments or questions on this issue? Okay, moving on to the next item, these next two I'm going to lump together. We have discussed spending $500,000 on the armory capital improvements, or rehabilitating the armory space, as we heard tonight from Zach Rises. The appropriations here recommended are $250,000 appropriated to the ARPA fund for this purpose, which is 286, and then also $250,000 to the capital improvements fund 580. So, this would be a total of $500,000 for the army rehabilitation. Are there any questions about this appropriation? Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you. I know that our Athens 2040 comprehensive plan does highlight the armory, especially as a value-added target place for the Armory Park especially. I am wondering to what extent some of these capital improvements might apply to the exterior, which would include the park, versus the interior, which would apply to more of the conversation we had earlier about the remote work setup and that sort of thing.
I believe all of this is targeting the, the building itself, although a lot of the envelope of the building has already been secured, so there are windows that are coming, and the roof has been done a number of years ago. Mayor, want to add to this?
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Crowell. You know, we, we've been pretty diligent as a, as a local government when it comes to preserving that building, and it really started with Mayor Paul Wile, to where we had the building, you know, the tuck work redone on the exterior, so the exterior, that particular part of the envelope was, was addressed, has a new roof on it, so we've invested over $280,000, and that includes the new windows, which are here, they just haven't been installed yet, so we'll start installing those, and that will complete the building envelope. So, primarily, this funding would be for the first-floor interior work, and I've been pretty diligent since 2016 of protecting and growing the capital improvements budget line, and we have over a million dollars in that fund line, and I was protecting that money for when we got to a point where we could really start to reinvest into the armory and bring it online. What I would like to do is, was already introduced, is use 150,000, or 250,000 from the ARPA fund and 250,000 from the capital improvements. We will be getting a second tranche of the, our second allocation, if you will, of the American Rescue Plan dollars this summer, and I will likely come back to council again for another 250,000 and possibly an additional 250,000 from capital improvements to put a million dollars into the, the building to get things going. That coupled with the 380 that we've already invested, it's really showing with the, the hope that we can get in the cap budget this time around, it's showing that, you know, the city's serious about investing in this building and hoping we can get Senator Holmwood and Representative Edwards to champion something through at the state level to, to come with some funding through the state cap budget, possibly operation budget the year after for this.
One other piece, I don't, I mean, just to pile on, again, this is all part of a package, right, to kind of piece everything together to get enough money to go and get the project across, is the fiber communities program, which is a grant where through Ohio Southeast, which is the economic development arm of state government, you know, the, you know, the 5123 that exists to kind of spend liquor money to help, to help prompt economic development. So, we think if we can layer all of this together, we can get enough to, to really deliver this project.
And one more pile on. You know, council with the fiber project, again, there will be fiber that runs up to the armory, which is providing that high-speed broadband out of that building for it to operate as a co-work share-work space, so it's like the pieces are all aligning, and this is, this is pretty exciting. This is something that, you know, with former Mayor Paul Wile's, you know, approval, Chris Fall, Councilmember Chris Fall at the time, and I worked really hard on putting together an ad hoc committee back in 2014, and it just seemed like, you know, something that was so obtainable at the time, as, you know, bright-eyed city council member, but, you know, I also recognize that it takes a lot of time and a lot of smart planning to get this building back into the public's hands again.
Thank you, Mayor, and just to respond to, directly to Member McCary, as far as the outside of the building, I love the park, the parklet that is there now, it's such a great use of the space, it used to be just a storage, you know, absolutely unusable fenced eyesore. I don't, I haven't seen any plans that have major changes to the rest of the outside, except for proposed entrance on the, on the west side of the building for handicap accessibility, et cetera, but other than that, I don't know about other parks or any kind of green space. I think probably it'll remain parking on that side, so, so no major changes as far as I know about the exterior of the building. Thank you. Yes, Members F.
Very briefly, since we're talking about all, all different armory-related details, and it, it does tie into our partnership with Sunday Creek, I think the, I think we have a good chance at, at some funding from the state, in large part due to their work and connections in, in promoting this, and also in highlighting to members of our legislature the, the Veterans Memorial section, that will be a part of this, and sort of by breaking this project into pieces, we can get support from different entities for the different pieces, and so things that, that perhaps our state legislature would be less likely to send money our way, we're, we're can, we can pull from other funds, perhaps from our capital budget or the ARPA fund, and, and complete portions, like especially the accessibility issue, that entrance and the elevator, if those can be incorporated into parts of the plans for a Veterans Memorial, then it, it, it brings the different pots of funding together for one big picture. So, I, I applaud all the moving pieces that are bringing, hopefully finally bringing this to, to a finished product.
I agree. Sunmake it Horizons, and the city administration has been very creative in trying to figure this out, and we're all, you know, very hopeful that it's going to all work out. Okay, no more comments. Last item on our agenda is a $500 appropriation to the Recreation Fund. To mention Ms. Beveridge again, she has been working to secure grant funding and donations, and she received this, this check for $500 from the Athens Foundation, from the Thomas and Barbara Kosterhers Fund, and this is really for general support for supplies for Arts West. That's the final item. Any questions about this? Other council members, city administration? Thank you, President Nisley, that completes Finance and Personnel.
All right, and that completes our meeting for tonight, 9:21. We'll see you all next Monday night. Thank you.